Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to tonight's Town Hall meeting. I'm Dennis Finley. I'm the current mayor of the Village of Dalton. I know that later on tonight, there will be an opportunity for you to provide questions. We've provided three-by-five cards at the entrance on a chair. You can go ahead and write those down. Hopefully, we'll have time to answer all those this evening. At the same time, this is currently a council meeting, at which point in time, I know we'll need to call roll for the attendance for council. I do know that Mr. Jim Bucklew, who is a council member, but also serves on the East Wayne Fire District Board, is not in attendance tonight. Mr. Bucklew will not be able to vote or discuss anything pertaining to the potential withdrawal from East Wayne, so it's actually a good thing he's not here tonight. And at this time, if we could, could we call roll?
Mr. Johns?
Yes.
Mr. Newsbaum?
Here.
Mr. Rabatton?
Here.
Mr. Bucklew?
Mr. Scheidt?
Here.
And Mr. Sawyer?
Here.
At this time, we're going to turn things over to our attorney, and she'll be able to introduce herself and give you an idea as to what she's planning this evening.
Okay. Um... Hello, everyone. My name is Tanya Rogers. I have been retained by Village Council to assist the village with this question regarding the fire district. How the meeting will go tonight is we have a prepared PowerPoint that we will go through here. After the PowerPoint, which will hopefully address a lot of your questions, we have been receiving a lot of questions from residents throughout the week. We appreciate those. We have tried our best to respond to them adequately. After I am done with this presentation, and again, this presentation is to just give you information, based on the questions and comments we are getting, as well as other kind of rumors that are going around, there's just a lot of disinformation. So the objective tonight is simply to get all accurate information out there. Once I am done, the mayor will have some prepared statements, and then the council will also have some prepared statements if they elect to do so. And then I just wanted to clarify one thing. The reason that Mr. Bucklew would not be able to vote has only to do with the fact that he's currently serving on both boards, and so he would have a conflict of interest. There's nothing to do other than that. And so we certainly hope he gets better, but as the mayor indicated, he would not be able to participate with this discussion anyway. After that, we do have, as the mayor indicated, we want to keep this meeting moving along. We want to hear from all of you, which is why, if you have a question, we welcome it, and we ask that you put it on a three-by-five card, bring it up here, and then myself and Attorney Carpenter and the mayor will take a look at it, and we will do our best to answer your questions. So on the first slide, you'll see this is just information. So at the outset, we want to make very, very clear that the consideration of the council to potentially withdraw from the East Wayne Fire District has nothing to do with the quality of work of our firefighters. We know every single firefighter who works for Dalton, who works for the East Wayne Fire District, and who works in a small region, gives 110% all of the time. There's no doubt about that, and so this is not in any way an indication that we don't have confidence in our firefighters. The consideration that Dalton Council is looking at right now has only to do with the makeup of the East Wayne Fire District and how it is structured and how it is funded. So for the next slide, so I just wanted to give the timeline of how the East Wayne Fire District came to be. And so initially, it was created in 2014, and it had four members: the Village of Marshallville, the Village of Dalton, Sugar Creek Township, and Bachman Township. The way it was funded is set forth there. Marshallville contributed, Dalton contributed, Sugar Creek contributed, and Bachman contributed. I'm not sure why it's not... Okay, all right. In 2017, the township of Sugar Creek elected to withdraw, and that became effective January 1st of 2017. And so the board then became comprised of three members: Marshallville, Dalton, and Bachman Township, and you can see how much each contributed on the slide. Two years later, Bachman Township also elected to withdraw. That was effective January 1st of 2019. And so then the funding came down to Marshallville and Dalton, and then Sugar Creek also continued to contract with the East Wayne Fire District, and they paid approximately $150,000. This came both from a payment from the general fund, as well as a levy that they had. In 2020, the East Wayne Fire District was successful at passing a levy which altered the funding. And then in 2022, the levy was renewed, and so now the funding is consisted of the levy, which is expected to generate about $149,900. Dalton still contributes $72,000, and then it's cut off... Oh. We didn't go back to the slide. Go back. There we go. So then Sugar Creek, between its levy and its $10,000 contribution from the general fund, contributes approximately $150,000. If you go to the next slide. So the board makeup, when the, when East Wayne Fire District was initially created, there were five members, or there were four members, and so the board had a total of five. So there was a member, Crown Bachman, Sugar Creek, Dalton, and Marshallville, and then there was one at-large member. After Sugar Creek withdrew, the board consisted of only four members, and so each of the participating entities had a member, and then there was at-large. And then in 2019, after Bachman withdrew, and it just became down to two members, the board went back up to five, so there is one at-large member, and then Dalton has two members, and Bachman has two members. If you could do the next slide. So one of the significant issues that you will hear about, and so we want to make sure we have accurate information, is that at the July 20, 2022 meeting, one of the members from Marshallville filed a motion to remove the Dalton representative, who was Mr. Frampton, and then the at-large member, who was Mr. Sullivan. There is a procedure in the joint resolution governing the board of how to do this, but it was not called out. And so if you look at the minutes, the East Wayne Fire District makes recordings on their meetings available online. I listened to it myself. So if you go to the East Wayne Fire District website, and then you listen to the July 20, 2022 meeting, around the 27-minute mark is where it starts. She simply alleges that there were allegations of misfeasance, malfeasance, and nonfeasance against both, and then took a vote. And because allegations were made against two members, only three members voted, and the vote was two to one. So the joint resolution that's contemplated is 733... It says 3A in the joint resolution, but the actual statute that deals with removal of a member is 35. And that calls for, if there is a charge of misfeasance, malfeasance, or nonfeasance, that there be written charges with an explanation of all the evidence that supports the charges, and then a call evidence hearing, which was not done at the July 20 meeting. All right, so if you go to the next slide. The members were ultimately reinstated after a few months of back and forth. Again, I'm just going off of what is public information. They were reinstated at the September 14, 2022 meeting, which, again, that recording is online. And then this issue was addressed in more detail at the September 28, 2022 meeting. Legal counsel for the East Wayne Fire District read a public statement about the issue. And again, that starts at the 1 hour 3 minute mark, and he concedes that they were improperly removed, so the motion to remove them from July was voided, and they were reinstated. However, both of them shortly thereafter resigned from the board, and now we have Mr. Bucklew... Oh, there's a typo. It's Bucklew, who is now the rep, and he's unfortunately home with the flu. And then the at-large seat currently remains vacant, so there are currently only four members voting on the board. If you go to the next slide. So with regard to litigation, again, this is a lot of information that is spread around, and we want to make sure there's accurate information. There's two slides outline the history of litigation investigations that involve the East Wayne Fire District. I want to be very clear that there has not been a final ruling by a judge on any of these, and so we're just letting you know the case names and numbers, and how they were resolved, or if they're ongoing. We are not suggesting that the allegations are substantiated. If we did so, that would purely be speculation, and that's not what we want to do. We just want to present the evidence. So after Sugar Creek withdrew, there was a lawsuit filed by the East Wayne Fire District against Sugar Creek. That was in the Wayne County Common Police Court, and I have the case number up there, which, again, you're welcome to look up if you're curious about the pleadings. You can go to the Wayne County Clerk of Courts, and you can get access to all of these filings. It was appealed. It was remanded back to the trial court, and then it was ultimately resolved by way of a settlement. So again, there was no final decision on the merits regarding any of the claims. There was a separate action commenced by a taxpayer regarding the distribution of assets, but it was dismissed for standing. So again, none of the allegations were resolved on the merits. The court determined that the taxpayer did not have standing to pursue it. And again, I have the case number up there. After Bachman Township withdrew, the township has had to file a lawsuit against the East Wayne Fire District. This was filed relatively recently. It's also in the Wayne County Common Police Court, so you can see the complaint there if you are interested. Again, this is in the very early stages, so we are not suggesting that the claims are substantiated. The Bachman Township also filed a claim against the Wayne County Auditor. The East Wayne Fire District is not a party to that, but it is relevant, or it is related to this issue. So again, the next slide has more information. Again, this is just for informational purposes, so you have all of the information. There was an Open Meetings Act claim filed by Brian Ames, that was back, it was actually this year, that, again, was also resolved by a settlement. And also, just for clarity, Brian Ames routinely files legal actions against all public bodies alleging Open Meetings Acts. He is often successful based on technicalities. So again, this is not as though this is a unique issue. This is attorney, or Brian Ames, he's not an attorney. He has lately filed lawsuits against most of the township or public entities in Wayne County, as well as Stark County and all the neighboring counties. So again, I just want to give context to that lawsuit. And then there's also, we have confirmation that a complaint has been filed against the East Wayne Fire District with the Ohio Auditor. We do not have a copy of the complaint. The only verification we have is that a complaint was filed on two topics. One had to do with allegations of irregularities with payroll, and one had to do with irregularities with fuel consumption. Again, we have only confirmation that that was filed. We have no other information, so the investigation is ongoing. So again, those claims are not substantiated at this time. There's also a complaint that was filed against the Dalton Village Fire Department. That is a nonprofit. It is independent. It does not run fire operations. And again, that was just an allegation. The only confirmation we have is, we don't have the nature of the complaint. I spoke with a DBFD's counsel this morning, actually. He stated the only thing they have is a letter from the Ohio Attorney General's Office asking for documentation. They have no other information, so again, we don't have any other information about this. All right, next slide. One of the most common questions we had was, how will the assets be divided, and who owns what, and what do they have? And so I wanted to put up the assets that we have confirmation of. When you look through them, there's actually very little that is outright owned by the East Wayne Fire District. The majority of it is owned by third parties and leased to the East Wayne Fire District, or it is purchased with grants. And the relevance of something being purchased with grants is oftentimes, grants have stipulations that if it is no longer used for its intended purpose, it either has to be given back, sold to another entity for the same purpose, or otherwise liquidated with the funds going back to whoever gave the funds. And so for the fire stations, East Wayne Fire District does not own either one. They are both leased. One is leased from the Village of Marshallville, and then one is leased from the DBFD. That lease expires the end of this year, and the lease with Marshallville expires the end of next year. So we do not have a full inventory of all the equipment. That is something that we've been trying to get, and we actually had correspondence from the East Wayne Fire District's council just yesterday, that they are going to try to get a third party to do a full inventory, just due to the lack of understanding as to which equipment is actually owned by the East Wayne Fire District, which is leased or otherwise gifted, and which is owned, or which was purchased with federal funds. And then if you look at the vehicles, that is one of the larger concerns we've gotten from the number of questions we've gotten, is the vehicles, who will get the vehicles? If you look at the list, the majority of the vehicles are actually leased, and so those entities would retain ownership of their vehicles in the event that East Wayne Fire District was dissolved. There were a few that were purchased with federal funds through a grant, and again, the grant would control what would happen with those vehicles. If you go to the next slide. There are two other topics that are relevant for consideration by your council that have to do with the assets. There is currently a federal grant application that was submitted to the United States Department of Agriculture, and it's through a rural development program. The grant application is seeking approximately $1 million, and that is to improve one of the fire stations. There's still not clarity as to whether the intent is to improve and expand the Dalton Fire Station or the Marshallville. One of the ongoing issues with that is because the East Wayne Fire District does not own either building, it's unclear whether they can even accept the funds, or how that would work. There has been some discussion of trying to get a very long-term lease with one of the fire stations, but so far, there has been resistance to that. And one of the concerns that's still not fully clear is if the fire district were dissolved in the future, what would happen to those funds, and who would be responsible for them? Again, there's not a whole lot of clarity. I reviewed the application. It is very long. There's a lot of jargon, and there's a lot of reference to federal code sections. And so we simply do not have enough information to know that if we were to accept these funds and expand a fire station, what would happen down the road if the East Wayne Fire District were to be dissolved? Would that put a lien on the building? Would it require a repayment of a loan? That's just information we do not have at this time. Also, there was a meeting at the East Wayne Fire District on December 12, where they were discussing the potential purchase of two squads, and they would need to obtain a $700,000 loan to do that. So again, concern about what would happen if it were, if East Wayne Fire District were to dissolve in the future, and they have a $700,000 loan, who would then be responsible for that debt? What would happen to those vehicles? So those are, again, just lingering questions out there that are relevant, that the council and mayor have been taking into consideration. If you go to the next slide. So with regard to annual statistics, we have a copy of the 2021 Annual Report. According to the annual report from the East Wayne Fire District, there were 623 calls total, and if you look, I have provided the breakdowns. The Village of Dalton accounts for approximately 45%, with Marshallville being approximately 14%, Sugar Creek 27%, and then out-of-district calls, which is often mutual aid, is approximately 14%. Go to the next slide, please. 2022, we have information based on the calls that were run through November of this year, and I do apologize, there's a typo. It should be 2022 total calls. So far, there's 586, and the breakdown in terms of percentages is relatively comparable to the year before. If you go to the next slide, please. So as I indicated before, the funding of this, how the funding works currently, after the withdrawal of Bachman Township and after the passage of the levy, is that when the levy was first passed, it was expected to generate approximately $149,900 annually. 81% of that comes from Village Dalton taxpayers, and 19% comes from Marshallville. In addition to the levy, Dalton pays $17,000. This payment was continued after the levy was passed. The intention was to assist with having more staffing at the Dalton Fire District on a more regular basis. Sugar Creek continues to contract with the East Wayne Fire District, and contributes approximately $150,000. The reason it's approximate is because they also are funded by a levy, and so that does vary year to year. And then there are other sources of income, including EMS billing, donations, and other various grants. So we have a copy of the East Wayne Fire District's projected 2023 budget and the sources of income, and you can see it here. And what's, what is relevant, and again, what council has been looking at, is the little box off to the right, which is the percentage of expected revenue generation. So the Village of Dalton plus their payment will contribute approximately, will just over 51% of all funding. Sugar Creek will contribute just under 40%, with Marshallville contributing just above 7%, and then other miscellaneous funds just under 2%. Next slide, please. And again, this is just more information regarding the different firefighters and statistics that we have. This is based on the 2021 Annual Report. Based on that report from last year, they can budget $192,000 for staffing, but only had to spend $167,000. Next slide, please. So this is where we're at. So that is the background of the makeup of the board, what has happened, and how the different assets, what different assets we have, what different personnel we have, and what different funding we have. And so we are now at a point where there are three options moving forward for fire safety services for Village of Dalton residents. The first option is to simply remain in the East Wayne Fire District indefinitely. The second would be to withdraw effective immediately, and so that would go into effect on January 1st of 2023. That plan would include having a temporary contract with an outside agency for one year of fire safety, and during the next year, trying to establish a Village of Dalton Fire Department that would be self-sustaining and self-run. The third option is to wait to withdraw until next year, and then for this next year, work to put together an independent Village of Dalton Fire Department. So you go to the next slide. So in speaking with council and the mayor, as well as the senior resident concerns, we put together a list of the benefits and concerns, or pros and cons, if you will, of each of these three options. And again, I am not advocating for any one of these. I'm just an attorney trying to help with the legal procedures. These are the considerations that your council members will be considering and thinking about. So for option one, remaining in the East Wayne Fire District indefinitely, there are some benefits. The obvious one would just be the continuity of care and a familiar service. We also have a common knowledge of response time and staffing. It would eliminate and remove lack of uncertainty regarding the cost of a new fire department. We already have a levy in place. The East Wayne Fire District is affordable. It is an affordable source of fire safety. And there's certainty as to control over existing grants and property that we already know about, as well as generally allows more employees to be on-call, because it's coming from two different township, or two different villages. If you go to the next slide, please. So the concerns with remaining in the East Wayne Fire District is, the primary one is just simply the lack of trust. There has been lack of trust over the years for a variety of reasons. If you follow the paper, you will have read stories about it. But the incident that occurred in July really caused a lot of, I mean, lack of trust entirely. Two members were removed, and so Dalton no longer had a voice for several months until they were reinstated, and so that was a very big problem. There are concerns regarding the consequences of the federal grant and incurring new loans should, for whatever reason, East Wayne Fire District dissolve down the road. There are concerns regarding the unequal balance of funding despite equal representation on the board. And so that was one of the reasons we wanted to provide the breakdown of the percentage of the funding sources, because it shows that Dalton is providing over 50% of the funding, and it has equal votes on the board. Marshallville is providing about 8% of the funding and has equal votes on the board. So that is a concern about the inequity of power balance, particularly, again, after the events that occurred earlier this year. There are concerns about the lack of long-term financial planning. This is part of the reason why we have lack of clarity as to what assets are and are not owned by the East Wayne Fire District, just because there's been a general lack of financial and future planning. There's also a lack of long-term stability for the reasons we discussed, again, with the unequal balance of funding and voting rates. There's the lack of control over fire chief hiring and retention. Earlier this year, three fire chiefs resigned abruptly without notice. I don't have the details on that. I only have a copy of the resignation letters, and so again, there is concern about the lack of control over that type of issue. There's also the concern about the necessity to cover costs of equipment upgrades and facility improvements for two entities when, again, the funding is unbalanced. So next slide, please. So the second option, I think I might have gone on a quarter when I put these up, but so the action, the second option is to wait a year to withdraw. So the benefits would be that we would have, again, continuity of care for the next year, where we have certainty as to the response time and availability of personnel. This would provide additional time to do a cost-benefit analysis and to do more research. It would reduce the uncertainty heading into 2024, and it would enable council to go through three readings of the resolution to withdraw. Next slide, please. The concerns of waiting a year, again, is the continued lack of trust, that is the number-one concern that I have heard. There's also the concern about the fire district moving forward with acquiring quite a bit of debt in the next year, that we would then have to grapple with if they waited a year to withdraw and dissolve the fire district. There's also lack of certainty regarding the distribution of assets, which we, again, are concerned about the moving around or lack of control over equipment and assets for the next year. If you go to the next slide. So the third, the third option, which would be withdraw effective immediately, which would, as a matter of law, dissolve the East Wayne Fire District effective January 1st of 2023. The benefits of this is that it enables Dalton to promptly move forward with creating a Dalton Village Fire Department. It removes uncertainty regarding incurring new debt, as well as who would have control over assets and equipment. It enables the village to immediately pursue entering into lease agreements, lease agreements with the Dalton Village Fire District Fire Department, because it would no longer have a lease with the East Wayne Fire District. It would eliminate the discord among the board, which has been a huge concern, and it eliminates the sense of unequal funding despite equal representation on the board. If you go to the next slide, please. The concerns about doing it so quickly, again, is that we will have to temporarily contract with a third party to provide fire safety services, which will be expensive. It may be more expensive in the short run, but the goal would be that the, it would end up being more cost-effective in the long run, but it would just have to be done very quickly. There continues to be uncertainty as to the distribution of the East Wayne Fire District assets. Potential litigation of doing it quickly, although, to be perfectly clear, if the fire district were to be dissolved at any time, it likely would result in litigation. And then it also requires an emergency organ, so there would not be the benefit of a three reading of the organs by council. If you go to the next slide, please. So this is the vision that the mayor will speak about a little bit more, about what the Village of Dalton would like to do to have an independently-owned fire department. And that would be, that would be to create a Dalton-controlled and operated fire department by 2024, although it would be owned and operated and controlled by the Village of Dalton. The bill will be to partner with neighboring entities who also require safety services, lease the station and equipment that the DBFD already has, use a combination of paid... I don't know why it's a state. Again, I had to do this today, so I do apologize. Any typos will be corrected, and this will be distributed publicly tomorrow. So it will be paid and volunteer firefighters. For the funding, there's currently a levy on. The goal would be to replace this levy with a different type of levy that would fund the Dalton-only fire department. And then the goal would overall to be ensure a sense of community and cooperation with DBFD, which has been a longtime partner with Dalton, providing fire safety. Good. Next slide. Again, just for anyone who may be concerned about how this works, again, this PowerPoint after correcting the typos will be available for public distribution. Will be available for public distribution tomorrow. These are the revised code provisions that are relevant. Again, just if you want to see what they are, again, we're trying to just be very transparent with what we're doing and what's going on. So revised code 505.371, that is the one that gives the authority to create a Fire District and also dictates how it is dissolved. And then revised code chapters 737 and 733 grant the village the authority to create and run a Fire Department. You go to the next slide, please. Other relevant information, just so the public is aware, is that a year ago, in December of 2021, after three readings, Village Council passed Resolution 2113. Again, that is a public record, so you can request a copy of it. And that authorized the mayor to enter into negotiations and start creating a Fire Department. That was a year ago. That was due, again, to concerns regarding lack of trust and lack of communication and cooperation with the East Wing Fire District Board. So that has been outly open for over a year. And then back in October, council passed a resolution to submit a request, I don't know if it was a resolution, but they, in October, made a public request for proposals regarding the provision of fire safety services for the Village of Dalton for the calendar year 2023. We have received only one response, and that was from the North Lawrence Fire District, and their proposed contract amount is $286,000. That has not been accepted yet, and there's been so far no negotiations with North Lawrence, just because there is lack of clarity as to how the council will move forward at the beginning of the year. Go to the next slide, please. So we tried to address a lot of the questions that we received. And as I stated, council and the mayor received a lot of emails from residents with questions and concerns, which we appreciate. It's really important that we hear from everyone. So one of the primary questions was how is the East Wing Fire District funded? We have gone over that. That is in the above slide. There's also a question about how much they pay, which again was covered in an earlier slide. Another important question is how will they fund a North Lawrence contract if that is what the village likes to do? So currently Dalton has $72,000 set aside for the Fire District, which they could use towards the contract. They also have American Rescue Plans available. And as indicated, they would also try to move forward with a levy on the ballot in the spring. And then how would they fund a new department? Again, the mayor will talk more about this, but the goal would be to obtain a new levy that would replace the existing East Wing Fire District levy. Next slide, please. So another common question and concern regarding the dissolution of the East Wing Fire District was, what will happen to the assets? So I kind of addressed this a little bit already, but a lot of the assets are owned by third parties or were purchased with grants. So where those are owned by third parties, they would go back to the third party. For any equipment that is purchased with a grant, it would be up to the agency that issued the grant what happened with that asset. Anything that is owned by the East Wing Fire District, there's a lack of clarity. And part of the reason for that is because the revised code provision that controls this, 505.371, is just quite frankly written very poorly, and it gives very little guidance to the auditor as well as to the members. Another reason for this is because the Fire District was only recently funded by a levy. So prior to 2020, it was funded by contract payments. And so when both Sugar Creek and Bachman Township withdrew, the auditor made the determination that because the Fire District was not funded through taxes but paid through contract payments, contract payments for which a service was received, that money is essentially deemed as just gone because the services were rendered. And so for any equipment that was purchased prior to 2022, there is simply a lack of clarity as to how they will be distributed. Anything purchased after 2020, when the levy was in effect, would be distributed equitably among the two agencies because it was purchased with tax dollars. And so then that is where a lot of the lack of certainty comes from, is just due to the unique way that the East Wing Fire District was funded for the first six years and based on the auditor opinions for the last two entities which withdrew. What will happen to the existing East Wing Fire District levy? And again, any funds that are collected will be distributed back to the members, and it would cease because it's being collected for a Fire District that would no longer exist. And then if it's dissolved, will the levy discontinue? Yes, that is yes. So another question that we received a lot of emails about is why would Dalton choose to obtain fire services from an outside agency instead of a local agency? That I think is a misunderstanding of the different options that are there. If the council were to move forward to withdraw immediately and have the East Wing Fire District dissolve effective January first, they would only be contracting with North Lawrence or another entity for one year, and that would essentially just be a stopgap measure to provide a continued fire safety services while Dalton is in the process of establishing its own Fire Department. What will the response time be? This is a common question, a very valid question. I have contacted North Lawrence to obtain information on that. I have not yet heard back, so we do not have a specific number at this time. However, I think it is important to note that currently neither the Marshallville or Dalton Station are regularly staffed overnight, and so it's volunteer responses. Whereas my understanding is that Marshallville will be staffed overnight, and the distance from the Marshallville Fire Department and the North Lawrence Fire Station are comparable from Dalton. And so it does not appear at this time that it would have any substantial increase in response time. But until we get that information from North Lawrence, we cannot give you a solid answer. Another very valid concern is what would happen if North Lawrence is responding to a different call, you know, within North Lawrence or one of their other agencies when a call is made in Dalton? That is through what's called the mutual aid, and that exists currently. The Village of Dalton already receives mutual aid from all the neighboring Fire Departments. So if Dalton is on a call in Marshallville, and then there's a call in Dalton, oftentimes North Lawrence will already be the agency that would respond, or there'd be other agencies that would respond. I believe the last figure I saw was since July, there have been ten mutual aid calls. I don't have, again, I don't have that concrete data up right now. Next slide, please. Is that the end? Oh, that is the end. So at this time, I'm going to hand this over to the mayor. He's going to make some comments, and then I'll go to the council, who will also have some comments. And then if there are additional questions that were not answered already, again, please write this down on the card, and we will do our best to respond to them the best we can. Thank you.
I think one of the main things that I hear from everyone is that we want to maintain a fire station in the Village of Dalton for years to come. And I think everyone has that same goal at heart. One of the concerns, one of the main concerns that I have has to do with the future of DBFD. So I'm not sure if a lot of you are aware of this, but for probably the past year and a half, Dalton Volunteer Fire Department has been under attack. So there are people who are looking to do away with it completely. If DBFD is no longer in existence and they give the assets over to East Wing, and something were to happen to East Wing, we would not have a fire station in the Village of Dalton. Do you understand what I'm saying? So if we give everything over to East Wing, and there is no East Wing in the future, we would have the ability to lose our fire station. We want to make sure that we keep our fire station. So these five gentlemen over here will have the ability. They're the ones that make the decision ultimately as to the future of whether or not we stay in East Wing. It is not my decision. It falls on them. So last year, the resolution that was passed, probably in the special meeting in November, all had to do with protecting DBFD. And if you want a copy of that, I think it's important that you read it. Read it all the way from the beginning to the end, and you will see that we support the individuals on DBFD. You'll also see in the wording that we truly believe that they were under attack. So currently, you figure the situation that they have with the Attorney General's Office trying to justify their existence has them in a point in time where they are a legitimate organization, but the questions that they're asking for and the things that they want aren't something that the average person can produce. So they had to hire an attorney. And because of that, they were depleting their funds. And as they deplete their funds, they are struggling then to, they're going to struggle to survive. You may find in the future, there may be a need to have a fundraiser for DBFD just in order to be able to protect themselves. So I know our community needs to have a fire station here. We need to have the best possible EMS service available. In the event that there is no East Wing, the vision is for the Village of Dalton to start and run their own Fire Departments. So why the Village of Dalton, I'm not sure, or the Township? You'll find that a lot of townships sometimes start Fire Departments. The village is well-suited to run the Fire Department, and that's because the building is located here, and we already have a number of the agencies that we need to work with. We already have established ties with them. How would it operate? It's actually established in the U.R. Vice Code. Each village establishing a Fire Department shall have a Fire Chief as the Department Head, appointed by the mayor with the advice and the consent of a legislative authority of the village, and shall continue in office until removed from the office as provided by stipulations in the U.R. Vice Code. One of the things that I've noticed, and one thing as being a former board member, when you have too many people trying to tell the chief what to do, it makes it very, very hard for them to do their job. And currently, the way it's structured, the structure is the issue. And it would be impossible for anyone to effectively run a Fire Department there, being pulled in multiple directions. It doesn't matter who you put over there, they're going to struggle. So by the village doing it, we already have established protocols, the same way we have a Police Department. Things are already laid in place, and it would be run very, very similar to that. Can the village legally run a Fire Department with a combination of paid employees and volunteers? Yes, we can. That's also identified in the U.R. Vice Code. What needs to be done differently to encourage and support first responders? If there's anything that is a major weakness, it is this. There needs to be an active fire auxiliary, regardless of whether there's an East Wing or there's something else. People in town, in the community, need to take time to support the people that are over there. There needs to be more of an open-door policy where people go in, provide them food or something after calls because they make tremendous sacrifices every day. Right now, it's all business, and they don't always see and hear from people that actually live in the community. So they come in, they run their calls, they go home. And we need to do more to support them. How will the Fire Department be funded? Now, one of the things that I would propose to council in the event that we no longer have East Wing would be to put a ballot on the levy this spring. And if we put on like a half a percent income tax, it would raise probably around $350,000. And this is something that would not be collected until 2024 and be collected along with our normal one percent income tax. The village currently spends $72,000 from the General Fund on Fire and EMS Protection. With the income tax revenue, that would raise approximately $442,000 a year. Northern Shurri Creek Township Fire District currently has a levy on the ballot that generates approximately $140,000 a year. When the Dalton Fire Department is fully operational, and if we're given the opportunity to actually cover that area, we would have the potential to have an estimated $562,000 to work with every year. One of the things that you run into when you try to staff a station is if you don't have the resources to do it, you don't have the money to do it, you're not going to be able to have the manpower. The current taxable income that East Wing has to work with the service Dalton, Marshallville, and Northern Shurri Creek Township is right around $361,000. How is East Wing currently funded? The East Wing Fire District is currently funded by a 2.9 mil property tax levy that will be expiring at the end of 2023. The money is intended for staffing. It does not provide for any large capital expenses, whether it's a building project, a fire engine, or rescue squads, or anything along those lines. Advantages to increasing the village income tax as opposed to a property tax, there would be an immediate tax break for property owners in the Village of Dalton. An income tax would allow for the opportunity to distribute the cost of the service between the residents and the individuals who have benefited from the additional staffing during the workday. And then the exact hours for staffing would be actually determined by the chief. Retirement payments are exempt from village income tax, so retirees would not be hit by this. And also, at the same time, there would not be any extra forms to fill out. So for instance, with the income tax for the school, there's additional form that needs to be filled out. That would not be the case with this. Will the village be eligible for grants the same way that East Wing Joint Fire District is? And the village would have the same opportunities. As a matter of fact, we currently use the same grant writer that East Wing uses. So they're already very familiar with our community. Will the community be losing the building, grant, or loan for $958,000? What it is, is it was written as discretionary congressional spending. So the USDA currently has the money that is to be awarded to East Wing. The information that was submitted by East Wing lists the address of 146 North Church, which is located here in the Village of Dalton. One of the things that you need to know is regardless of whatever happens, whether we have East Wing or whether we have something else, the actual grant or loan or this discretionary spending should probably be in the name of whoever owns the property. So the property owner needs to be the one so that it falls back directly. If for some reason it goes from a grant to a loan, it will fall back directly onto them. So a piece of information that you need to know. In order to change the name, would require an act of Congress. So on Tuesday, I met with Max Miller, our congressman-elect, and his two aides. There are no guarantees, however. They're committed to do whatever it takes to assist the Fire Department or the Fire District, whoever it is, in obtaining the $958,000 for the original intended purpose of when the application was originally put out. The one thing that everyone needs to know is that accepting the money will require the property to be used as a firehouse in perpetuity. So once you put that money into that building, you must keep that building as a fire station. So if it is here in the Village of Dalton, it ensures that you will have a fire station here into the future. How and when will this transition occur? Well, it all comes down to the timing and the ultimate decision will rest on the shoulders of the five people that are sitting over at that table. And so because of the fact that we have a representative from Village Council that actually currently serves as a representative for East Wing, I will not be voting. I do not have a voice. It's going to fall on those five. So I do know that the way all this stuff played out, it's important that you know that even with the resolution that was passed in November, I made no contact whatsoever with state fire marshal or anyone until I saw how things were moving very quickly, and we had an actual written resolution to be able to pull out of East Wing. And it meant having to move very, very quickly to try to come up with something for the future. So my first phone conversation, or my first phone call, would have been the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And even today, I met, or I didn't meet with, but I talked to someone from the state fire marshal's office. In order for us to put a Fire Department together, I was told we only need two things. We need equipment, and we need manpower. They already have a number established for the Village of Dalton. We've already had a Fire Department here, and they're willing to go ahead and reestablish that as soon as we have those two things. The thing that will hold us up in order to be able to do it will be we have to hire the employees and make sure we go, make sure we go. will be we have to hire the employees and make sure we go through criminal background checks. We would also need to be able to do some sort of a contract with DBFD. So regardless of what happens, whatever decision council makes, I'm going to work and do everything I can to make things work regardless of what the situation is. So, and I believe we had some additional comments from some council members. So I, oh, you're, you might have a microphone over there.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight.
Hold it. Can you get on the microphone, please?
Yeah, I'll get here.
No, not on the.
How about that?
Very good.
I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out. I know it's a busy holiday time. A decision like this, it's encouraging to see people out here. So I think it's important for everyone to take the time to come out here to at least understand the position of the council. And this is my personal statement and where I stand. My position on firing EMS within the village of Dalton is safety first. And as an elected leader of the community, we must ensure decisions made consider all sides and barriers. Mayor and the council president's plan to create a village department, a village fire department when viewed singularly has merit. The plan would provide long-term, consistent source of funding spread across a larger tax base versus currently only property owners. It is a plan worth considering, but not at the cost of safety. The timeline of forcing this through before 2023 is a nonstarter for me as there would not be local fire EMS coverage. A better solution would be to work with our partners, Marshallville, to have a handoff of service between East Wing Fire District and new department with zero interruptions in service. I say all this to portray that it's okay to have discussions and agree to disagree as different viewpoints have value for the decision-making process. If we plan to create a village department, it should have been discussed openly as an idea of merit versus trying to discredit East Wing and people associated with it to create a reason to withdraw.